This meeting is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This evening, we will have a couple of continuances that will be -- we will be making motions for, but those people who might be here for 9 Fruit Street, 60 River Road, or 144 Secong Street, these three hearings have all been continued either by the zoning board or by the applicant, and during the evening, motions will be made to continue those hearings. So we will not be hearing those hearings this evening. So you're free to stay, welcome to stay, until those hearings are continued, or you can leave if you so choose. We're going to review the minutes for a little bit and see if we have a fourth member, full member arrive, so we can hear 43 Rockwood Road, a PR hearing. So in the meantime, we're going to be reviewing minutes. If the board wants to start with the December, I think we have a November 21, November 21 minutes.
Say again?
Yeah.
Just by time. You can alternate member, you can sit on the board in the case of the absence, ability to act upon the interest of any board member, or any of those board members may be made up of any combination of any of the things.
I move to accept the meeting minutes from November 21, 2017.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's now go to the November 30 meeting.
I move to accept the meeting minutes from November 30, 2017.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let us move to December 6, 2017. Amy, do we have January 17?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from December 6, 2017.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I think let's, we'll hold off on December 20, January 3. I did, we're going to, we'll hold off on our
Okay.
December 20 and January 3, we'll have a public hearing. Amy did check the bylaw, and Devin, who was here for the last hearing of 43 Rockwood Road, can sit in and hear this and vote. So Devin will be the fourth voting member this evening. So, without any delay, I would like to continue the public hearing for 43 Rockwood Road. Attorney for Simpson.
Good evening. I'm Joanna Giorgio-Hilbert from Mackey &amp; Mackey, 1256 Washington Street in Norwood, and I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Bruce and Marie Simpson, to follow up on the meeting that, the hearing that we last had on this matter. I really just wanted to summarize our arguments, and I have a short letter for you which summarizes essentially our three positions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it is the appellant's position that the office use of the subject building at 43 Rockwood Road cannot be renewed, and that the use of this as an office or commercial use should not be allowed to be marketed as commercial property other than as allowed by the current zoning bylaw. And really, there are three separate and distinct reasons for this position, and if the board were to find in favor of any of these three positions, we believe it would prevent the use from being continued. The first is that there was a change in 1972 of a non-conforming use to a conforming use, and pursuant to your bylaw section F2B, a non-conforming structure or use may be changed to be conforming, but once changed to be conforming, it shall not be made non-conforming again. It is undisputed that the building was once occupied by a non-conforming use, which was a restaurant, I believe in the '50s and the '60s. In 1972, it was converted by Mr. Richard Boomer into a real estate office. At the time, I believe Mr. Boomer's mother lived in the residence on the property. Under the 1972 bylaw, a real estate office as an accessory use to a residential use was allowed by right. For some reason, we don't know why, Mr. Boomer applied for a special permit for the extension of a non-conforming use, which the zoning board did grant, but they noted in their decision that the use was allowed by right. And so for that reason, pursuant to the plain language of your zoning bylaw section F2B, the undisputed facts of the case, the property lost its non-conforming use status in 1972 when the use was converted to a conforming use. Second, there has been a discontinuation of a non-conforming use. Pursuant to your zoning bylaw section F3B, any non-agricultural, non-conforming use that has been discontinued for two years may not be renewed. And Mr. Attorney Phil Mackey, who is here, previously submitted a memorandum which contained case law which established that it's not abandonment, it's discontinued. So any discontinuation of the use for two years or more prevents the use from being reestablished. Therefore, the only inquiry the board is required to make is whether or not there was a two-year period wherein the non-conforming use, in this case, office use, was not used. And there's also case law which establishes that the burden is on the person who wants to continue the non-conforming use to prove that it was used. This board has previously determined that the property was vacant and boarded up for six to eight years prior to 2011, and you have a copy in the memorandum that Attorney Mackey previously submitted of a memo that the Norfolk zoning board submitted to the town council, which indicated that. In addition, I've attached to this letter an affidavit from the appellant asserting that the property was vacant from approximately 2001 through 2007, and again, from 2014 through the present. And, you know, as the appellant's live directly across the street from the property and have unobstructed view, they are, and have been in a good position to observe what goes on there. So therefore, pursuant to the plain language of the zoning bylaw section F3B, this board's own inquiry and the appellant's affidavit, the property lost its non-conforming use status when the office use was discontinued for more than two years on multiple occasions. And third, the lapse of a special permit. Pursuant to the zoning bylaw section G4, any use permitted by special permit that is discontinued for a period of one year or more shall cause the special permit to lapse. It is undisputed that the property has not been used for any use since approximately May-June of 2016. By the plain language of the zoning bylaw, the lapse provisions apply to any use permitted by special permit. This would include a non-conforming use that has been extended via a special permit. In addition, as the original non-conforming use, which was restaurant use, was discontinued in 1972, now that the special permit has lapsed, that use has clearly been discontinued for more than two years. That use cannot be extended by applying for a new special permit. Therefore, pursuant to the plain language of section G4 and section F3B of the zoning bylaw, and the undisputed facts of this case, the 1972 special permit has lapsed, and the non-conforming use may not be reestablished via a new special permit or otherwise. And I would, I would indicate to the board, the legislative intent behind Chapter 48, Section 6, which allows the extension of a non-conforming use, was to give towns the ability to, to not allow a non-conforming use to continue where it had been either discontinued or abandoned, depending on the terms of the bylaw, for more than two years. And the intent of that was so that zoning bylaws may regulate non-use of non-conforming buildings and structures so as not to unduly prolong the life of non-conforming uses. And I would suggest that we have a situation here where a non-conforming use has been unduly prolonged for a significant amount of time, but at least at this point, it's time that this non-conforming use is no longer prolonged, for the three reasons, any of the three reasons, if the board were to agree with any of those three reasons, I think, that we would respectfully ask that they find in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Hilbert. Any questions for the attorney from the board? Bob?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. The currently attorney, Nannaselli?
Yes.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you very much. Attorney Thomas Nannaselli for the landowner, James LaRusso, trustee of Lobbo Realty Trust. Is the building commissioner going to be here tonight?
Amy, do we have any indication if he's?
Okay, I ask because this is an appeal of his decision supporting the fact that the non-conforming use was still in existence and hadn't been, had not been abandoned or discontinued. So I would expect not only him to be here, but I, even at the last meeting, I was kind of surprised the town council wasn't here to support his position. In any event, we'll move on. Getting to the, one of the issues that, one of the three issues that the appellant's attorney raised, as far as a present discontinuance of the use as a, an office building since 2014. I have Mr. LaRusso with me tonight, he wasn't here at the last meeting, and I also have his check register for the period from October of 2015 through June 27 of 2016, and you're certainly welcome to look at this. I have flagged the pages. This check register, I should say, first, contains checks that he wrote, of course, and also receipt, notations of rents that he received, not only from this property at 43 Rockwood Road here in Norfolk, but also from a building he owns in Rentham Center, known as the Rentham Block. There are multiple tenants in that building. But he has notated the rents that he's received from each of those tenants, and this indicates to you, which you, as I say, you can see for yourself, that the last rent he received for, from the tenants at 43 Rockwood Road was May 1 of 2016, which would be rent through the end of that month, of May 31. And he will also tell you, if you ask him, that those tenants moved out either at the very end of May, of that month of May 2016, or the beginning of June 2016. So it was occupied as an office use by those tenants at that time. The tenant was, all, I'm not, it was a tree service company, I forget the exact name of it, and, what was it?
Green Trees.
Green Trees. And before that, it was occupied by Green Trees and another business, but strictly for office use. Now, would you like to take a look at this, or just?
Yes, did you make copies, or is that your only copy?
This is, this is the original, right here.
Okay, sure.
The flags will tell you where, you know, where the, the rents are notated. So for, I'll just start off on the first one. For December of 2015, there's a notation that he received $375 from Green Trees and $375 from All Right Asphalt. And then you can continue on each month through the month of May there, just to go to where the flags are.
This is a check register, it's not, there's no canceled checks with it, right?
There may
Just a, just a check register?
There may be some checks that were actually voided, yeah, but
Well, I'm asking clear checks.
No, I don't believe there are any. Are there, Jim, are there any checks that you haven't written out of that checkbook that are blank?
I think so.
All right, now, going on to another point that counsel for the appellant raised regarding the special permit that was issued in 1972, that was a special permit, and I have a copy of it right here, which I can share with you, that allowed the change of a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, which was less, that had less of an impact on the neighborhood. And that, that was the, the essence of the special permit. Do you happen to have a copy of it already, or?
We do have a copy of it, yes.
Okay. It doesn't, it doesn't say anything that, there's, there's no indication that the office use was an allowed use under any provision of the zoning bylaws at that time. It was another non-conforming use. And the, the issue with, if, I know you haven't had a chance to really look at my memo, but the issue with that provision of the zoning bylaws, which deals with special permits, says that a, a non-conforming use that was issued, a non-conforming use existing under a special permit can be, well, can be discontinued, or the permit will lapse if the use has been discontinued for a period of one year or more. And the argument that I make is that that statute, that, not statute, that provision of your zoning bylaws is in contravention of the Supreme, of the appeals court case that I attached to the memorandum.
This is Bartlett versus the Board of Appeals of Lakeville? Okay.
That stands for the proposition that a, a non-conforming use can only be lost if it's discontinued for a period of two years or more or abandoned. The, your statute provides for a discontinuance, but that would result in a lapse of the, of the non-conforming use. The, anything in contravention of that, and in this case, I think that your particular provision in the, in the zoning bylaws, I think it's section G4, is in contravention of that statute, and you can't have a bylaw that violates the statute. The cases have held that from, I think I cited a case from 1897 in my memo. So that, that particular second sentence of G4 seems to be out of place anyway. So it applies to permits that are issued under the special permit section, which is 48, section nine of the statute, of the general laws, excuse me. It doesn't, it doesn't apply, it doesn't seem, to, to a special permit that is not issued under section nine. So in this case, I don't think it's applicable, number one, and secondly, I think it is in contravention of the statute, which says that you cannot discontinue. 48, section 6, says that you cannot discontinue or have a non-conforming use lapse for discontinuance unless that has occurred for two consecutive or continuous years. And so I therefore believe that the, the one-year statute violates that, the one-year bylaw violates that statute. And if, and especially under the, under the case that we just talked about, it clearly, which, by the way, that case was adopted, the reasoning of it was adopted by the Supreme Judicial Court, this was an appeals court case. The, the reasoning of that case was adopted by the Supreme Judicial Court in another case. So I think you have a provision in that bylaw that is in violation of the general laws, and it really is of no effect, and it's, in these circumstances, where we're talking about a, a non-conforming use that was not created by, under any provision of section nine, 48, section nine, I think it's unenforceable.
Well done.
I think that's, I'm sure you have some questions, and
Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Attorney Hilbert to respond and get her read on Bartlett versus Board of Appeals of Lakeville. What's your interpretation?
In terms of the lapse provision? So my interpretation of that is that the, the lapse provision doesn't change the statute, which, which does provide that towns can regulate uses that have been discontinued for two years or more. In this case that we're talking about, we have a, a non-conforming use that was extended by special permit, and that special permit is what has lapsed. The actual original non-conforming use has been discontinued for more than two years, but because of a special permit, assuming that, that my first argument is, is not correct, but if that non-conforming use was extended by a special permit, it's that special permit which we're talking about has lapsed. And so I don't, I don't believe the two are in contravention. Not every non-conforming use has a special permit to extend it. This is a particular circumstance where the, the town of Norfolk has allowed you to extend a non-conforming use by special permit, but if that special permit lapses for more than a year, then that would go away.
Okay. So if the restaurant did not close down, the restaurant, unless the zoning enforcement officer deemed it no longer acceptable in the zone, it could still enjoy its right as a non-conforming use in that location, is that correct?
Yes, if it was still in existence today, yes, it could.
Okay, all right. So again, it's not the non-conformity, it's the special permit. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions?
Could I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The special permit can, can lapse, can be disregarded after one year, that, that's fine, but that doesn't change the non-conforming use. That, that use of that building was non-conforming from the time that zoning was enacted here in Norfolk. I make reference to a plan from 1953 that shows that a building that, in the same location and sort of the same shape as the current building, that was labeled a store. It was, so it was, that, that use was non-conforming from the enactment of zoning here in Norfolk, as I said, and it was non-conforming when it was used as a restaurant, and that use in 1972 was, was changed to a less intrusive, if you will, non-conforming use as an office building. But it didn't lose its character as a, as a non-conforming use. It was a non-conforming use, this is what I tried to explain at the first meeting when you quizzed me on this, and I really wasn't able to articulate my position at that time. That, that non-conforming use didn't change. It was non-conforming before the 1972 decision, it was non-conforming after the 1972 decision. And there's, there's no evidence in, that I have seen that indicates there was any prior abandonment. If we're talking about an, not an abandonment, but a If we're talking about, not abandonment, but a discontinuance of use, if we're talking about something that supposedly was discontinued, a use ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, I, I think there's, you got some issues with statute of limitations. You just can't, there's no evidence that, that you can rely on to say that that use was discontinued so many years ago. If we're talking about from nineteen, I mean, from 2012 until the present time, that's different. And I have the, the original, the original argument was that it was discontinued in 2014, and you have the check register there, which shows you that he was collecting rents from the tenants up until May of 2016. So, the two years hasn't run. And, and it's getting back to that issue about the, the special permit lapsing after one, one year. That, that provision, and I tried to explain, and I know it's a little difficult to follow, but I tried to explain why that, that second sentence of that special permit section G four is in Congress and doesn't fit in with the rest, with the other two sentences. It would have been okay, regardless of that fact, it would have been okay if it said that that special permit wouldn't lapse until after two years of discontinuance, but it didn't, because it says one year, it's in contravention of forty-eight, section six. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Attorney Nannaselli. Do you dispute the contention of the applicant that the building was vacant approximately from 2001 to 2007?
Yes, I, I haven't seen any, any, any evidence that it was, and even if it was, my position is that you can't, you can't go back that many years and then all of a sudden complain about it now. It's just not, you know, it's, it's, it's not fair, is basically what it comes down to. I mean, if they had a complaint back then, why didn't they bring it?
Attorney Hilvert?
The burden is not on the appellant to prove that the use was discontinued. It's actually on the proponent of the non-conforming use to prove that the use had been continued, and there was no two-year break. And there is ample case law, I have a case, if you, if you'd like to take a look at it, but there is ample case law on that point. The burden is clearly on the proponent of the non-conforming use to provide proof that it has been continued for, not, has not been discontinued for two years.
I'm going to ask you a follow-up question, but Attorney Nannaselli, after our last meeting, one of the things we were looking for was to determine the use from 2001. I did contact John Cahalan from Prudential Prime. He lives in Brewster now, and for any car buffs, it was not a Jaguar, it was a Mercedes that he was trying to sell in the parking lot. Mr. Cahalan's recollection, to me, he, he does not drive any longer, he suffers some severe arthritis, was that he moved out of that building in 2002, 43 Rockwood Road, and ceased his operation in Norfolk. I asked him when he moved into the building, which he said was around 2000. I then went to Dicky Holmes, because my recollection was he moved back to Main Street, and, which he did not.
Who's Dicky Holmes?
Dicky Holmes is the owner of the office building on Main Street in Norfolk, one, I think it's labeled 146 Main Street, where I remember seeing a Prudential Prime sign. I went to Dicky Holmes and asked him, would he check his records? He has records showing that John Cahalan rented at 146 Main Street up to 2000. April of 2000, he left his building and went to 43 Rockwood Road. So, there, there does appear to be a timeframe, and I didn't know if you had a chance to check it, that, Mr., that building from 2002 to some period that I was hoping you would have information for that, for us this evening, that the building was not being used as an office building or any other type of operation. But I did talk to both those individuals.
Okay, well...
Now, to, to that point, and both of you, you had already mentioned it, that because the building then was used again sometime in 2015, that it doesn't matter what happened prior to that, and that's what I want to ask Attorney Hilvert, is, is there any statutes of limitation that says that they, because it went, because it was being, I won't say illegally used, but because it was being used after 2007, that what happened prior to that no longer is, is law?
No, there's not, and the, essentially, it was a, a non-complying use at that point. So, it was no longer a legally, legally prior existing non-conforming use, it became a non-complying use, and could have been shut down by the building inspector at any time, but there's no statute of limitations on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, my, yes. My client bought the property in 2007 from a developer who had just purchased it like a couple of months before, from Mr. Boomer. And from 2007 on, my client was making some use of that building, I'm sure, either as a rental or as his own office for a time, he was in there, I know that. So, I, as far as specifics, no, I don't have specific names and dates for you. If, if, and I, I would, I would say that after all this time, that the, the appellants have sat on their rights, and they really shouldn't be rewarded for that by being able to bring this up now, but I'm happy to go back and check further records if that's what the board would like. I don't have a problem doing that. And also, I just want to say one other thing, as far as counsel's argument that I, that the proponent has the burden of proof, the proponent of the non-conforming use, I don't disagree with that, I, I agree with that, but this is a case of an appeal of a building inspector's determination. I don't really have any burden of proof here that I necessarily need to make. I'm, I'm making this because the burden has fallen on me, literally, to, to defend our position, because the building commissioner has decided that he made his decision, and I don't know, what, what his thinking is, maybe he just says, you know, see what happens, and if it stands, it stands, if it doesn't, too bad. Well, I, I think he has to do more than that, and that's why I suggested that, you know, it would have been proper for town council to be here at the first meeting, at least. I mean, there was a, Mr. Bullock said that, yeah, he did speak with town council, and town council said that he agreed with Mr. Bullock's determination, but I don't know what weight you're going to give to that. I would rather have had town council here. So, I mean, just to sum that up, I do have, the proponent, as a legal, I'm sorry, as a legal theory, what counsel said is correct, but in this case, we're talking about an appeal of a building commissioner's determination. I don't have any real burden, I'm just, like I say, I'm the last man standing to, to defend the, my client's use of this property. And if, if you want me to go back to those years and try and fill in the gaps, I'll, I'll do that, I'll try and do that. But I, I don't really think it's, it's, I don't think it's relevant at this point. I mean, we're, we're talking 2018. There was an allegation that it was vacant since 2014. If you look at that check register, you can see that, that can't be.
Okay. Attorney Hilvert?
So, I would say, you know, burden of, burden of proofs aside, I, I think it's been fairly established by the appellant's affidavit that between 2001 and 2007, it was vacant. The research that you've done would suggest maybe 2002 through 2007, and then I believe Marie has some more information about when it was showing that it was vacant, if you wanted to.
As you know, Norfolk has what we call the Little Green Book, where local businesses advertise. Mr. Cahalan, back in 1999, advertised on the back of the Little Green Book, his property, his business, Cahalan Associates, at 148 Main Street. In 2000, he advertised the business, Cahalan Associates, at 43A Rockwood Road. The owner of the Little Green Book, Mr. Charlie Russo, indicated that John Cahalan's last year for advertising in the Little Green Book was the year 2000. Mr. Cahalan did not advertise at all in the Little Green Book from the year 2000. He was not at 43 Rockwood Road.
Thank you. Attorney Nannaselli?
Respond, Mr. Chairman. First of all, whatever the owner of the Green Book said is clearly hearsay. Secondly, we're talking about 2000, that's eighteen years ago. The appellants have sat on their rights. If what they say is true, they've sat on their rights, and now they want to revive those rights to the detriment of the owner of this property, and that shouldn't be.
Okay.
Chairman, do we have a written opinion from town council?
I don't think we do, Amy, we have nothing from town council, do we? No, okay. Bob?
What's coming to my mind is whether or not, I'm, I'm just questioning whether or not this thing should even be before us at this point. This almost reminds me of, it almost reminds me of one of those cases. Sure. Yeah. There seems to be so many legal issues that are sort of surfacing with this, that I'm wondering whether or not this is properly before us. At this point in time.
What are your concerns, maybe we can?
I got to be honest with you, it's very confusing to me, it just is. Maybe there's... And I don't know if, for the legal research needs to be done on something like this. Joe, I'm just putting it out there, that's all.
Kevin? Attorney Nannaselli?
The only other comment I have is that I think the case is properly before this board, only because it's an appeal of the building commissioner's determination under the statute, so for better or worse, I think you have it.
No, I, I would agree, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is the proper place to be talking about this. What I would like to recommend is, if town council is, I, I don't like going against town council, he's the one that has to defend this in court. I've never gone against town council. If he's recommending that he agrees with the building commissioner, then I think we need to get something in writing from him.
Okay.
I think he needs to address that. I don't know if he can do that, if he has to come here in person, or if he can, if we can brief him and have him write something up, but there are several legal issues here, and if he's of the opinion that the building commissioner is on solid ground, then we need to hear that from him. Again, that's just my thought.
I don't believe town council, as far as I know, town council has not, I haven't heard that town council has weighed in on this. Has, has the board heard that?
The, the building commissioner did say he spoke to town council. He was, we, we had, we had thought that the building commissioner would be here this evening, and I thought he was going to provide us with something in writing from the town council. I guess we're all surprised at that. Mr. Simpson?
As a rookie to the process of the zoning board of appeals, we don't ask for an opinion of town council without receiving one in writing. I would suggest he did not get one, or he did not get one that was agreeable. There's no way that he would not have made a ruling, and he did not. Also, we have not just sat by idly during this time period. It was unoccupied. There was no reason to be concerned about it. When it became occupied, we spoke to the building inspector. Would you like to report what he said? Marie was working at the town hall at the time, questioned how it could be occupied again, and was challenged by the building inspector. Very shortly thereafter, was excused from the town hall, now works at the fire department. We have made efforts, we have been rebuffed, but there is, if there's a ruling from town council, it should have been here in writing a long time ago. It was requested.
Attorney Hilvert and Attorney Nannaselli, if we, if we choose to, to continue the hearing, which I know no one would like us to do, to get an opinion or have something in writing from town council, would that be acceptable to both parties? I hate to continue it, but...
Yes, I'm fine.
Attorney Nannaselli, would you have any issue with?
I don't have any objection. I think it's unfortunate to have to continue this hearing on this matter again, but I understand the position you're in, and, and I don't envy it, frankly.
I, I, I don't like to, I agree, I don't like to continue it as well, I think we've continued it too long, but I do want to take into account what the members think, and I do want to give every opportunity to our town council. At this time, why don't we, if there's no other questions for the board, why don't we just open it up to any questions from the audience? And I see a woman. You have to state your name, please.
Donna Anderson. I'm 37, Rockwood Road. My husband has been coming, but he's been in the hospital. So, we have lived at 37 Rockwood Road since 1975, and so Boomer Real Estate was there at that point. This is actually the first time before, when all this came up, that we have ever even got notification that there was going to be a change. So, we were used to somebody being there, then not being there for many years, then I remember Cahalan came, then he left, it was vacant. Then the, I think it was Albright or whatever, was there for a few years, and then they were gone. So, you know, this is the first time that we're involved, because we were never notified of anything, even though we are butters, but it was just a small business, it, it wasn't really out of character with the, the area, so we never had an issue with it. So, I mean, we hadn't looked into getting a lawyer, but at this point, we may if we need to, because as I understand, it's not going to stay kind of a small business, it's going to be developed into some other, you know, I'm not sure what. So, that's our opinion.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one more point. The reason I want to get an opinion from town council is I want to, I, I think he needs to have the benefit of hearing both sides of this. I think he's heard just one side of the story. I think we need to provide him with some additional facts, and I don't think he's got the whole story or the whole picture.
I think, I think it's a good idea.
So, I, I think...
I hate to, like I said, hate to continue it, but it sounds like it's the, it's the prudent thing to do.
Yeah, there's a lot of information here that he hasn't seen yet, or been able to weigh in on, and, you know, there's, there's new information here tonight that I think is relevant, and so I think he needs to get everything before him.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Do I, so, Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we continue the hearing from 43 Rockwood Road to a date and time certain. When can we do that?
Well, next Tuesday, we've got Abbeville, the 28th, we have the enclave, and then we have March 7th, where we're probably continuing the other three points tonight.
We could probably do March 7th.
March 7th, okay. To March 7th at?
We don't have anything specific on 44 yet, but we did suggest on seven o'clock to them. So, I don't know.
So, maybe 7:15?
7:15.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll see on March 7th.
And that's here.
Yes.
Any particular time?
And if there is any other...
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
If there is any other information that either party, either side would like to provide, if we could get it a little bit ahead of time. Just a lot to read tonight, Attorney Natale, so if you could just, if you have any additional information, certainly...
I apologize, but I just couldn't get it for a lot of reasons.
Understand. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Can I get copies of that?
No, no, just those pages.
Yeah, just those pages, because it was presented to the board and evidence, so it just didn't... You can, you can write out everything that's on the list.
I mean, and I would, I would suggest even, even cancel checks. It's a check register, which really is not...
This is a register?
Well, it's a check register, but it's not a check. So, a cash check would be the legal requirement for proof. I have a bunch of bank check registers in my kitchen drawer, I could start filling out, so...
Deposit receipts, you mean?
A deposit receipt, a, a cancel check, either one. I don't think you'd want to give us your deposit receipt, you'd probably want to give us canceled checks, if anything, if you have them.
You wouldn't have the canceled checks?
I wouldn't have, I have to go to the tenants.
Well, typically, the, well, I don't know how your banks work. My bank sends me a copy of the canceled check, so whatever method your bank uses, maybe you can get a canceled check. You don't have to, it's up to you. Again, it's part of the evidence as we continue the hearing. Thank you. It is eight o'clock, and we, we're going to continue with Sixty River Road, which we are going to continue till March seventh. So could I get a motion?
I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for one, for, which one? Sixty River Road, to March seventh?
Correct.
At seven thirty P.M.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to open, continue the public hearing for one forty-four Seacong Street, which we are, the board had asked for continuation? So I'd like a motion to continue the public hearing for one forty-four Seacong Street.
I'd like to move that we continue the public hearing for one forty-four Seacong Street to March seventh at seven forty-five P.M., seven o'clock P.M.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have fifteen minutes before our next hearing, which is nine Fruit Street. So why don't we continue by looking at the December twentieth minutes? Get those over with.
December, which one's Chris?
December twentieth. One of the Bible Amy has given this evening.
Where the heck are those? Oh, here they are.
Is there a guideline as to when somebody can request a continuance? Isn't there a, isn't there like a buffer of time, so that people that have planned to come don't come here and find out at the last minute? There's no guideline as to when you can or you cannot?
Obviously, the most courtesy they afford us is what we'd like, but there is no guideline that prevents them from, just as, as sometimes the board has to continue a hearing at the last moment.
You can always call my office and chat.
No, but she's saying, you know...
No, I mean like the, like today, she could call at six o'clock or...
I might just think that there's some kind of a, of a time beyond which, unless you're in an emergency, you can't just say you're not coming.
Well, usually they, in all cases, they all have given a reason for why they're continuing.
I'm talking about the timeframe. As in, I suppose like as last minute, I mean...
You're saying is, does it, is it cut off Tuesday at five o'clock?
Yeah, or an hour before the meeting.
There is not. Okay? But, you know, you can call the land use office up to six P.M. if you want to verify if you're, the hearing you're interested in is still going to be here that night.
So by six P.M., the, an hour before?
Oh, we will always know, they have to notify us before the town hall, the town land use office closes, yes.
So there'll be that hour before he would...
Yes, yes, at least.
That's what happened today?
I don't, they were all, all these hearings were postponed or asked to be continued long before the six o'clock.
I was talking about one twenty-three.
One twenty?
I mean, nine Fruit Street, rather.
Nine Fruit Street was before six o'clock, yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
I can't update an agenda within forty hours of the meeting.
No, no, I didn't say that.
I would like to make a motion to accept the me, meeting minutes of December twentieth, twenty seventeen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, why don't we review the January third, two thousand eighteen minutes, and then we can be done with our minutes for this evening. Second was, Bob?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minute, minutes from the meeting of January third, twenty eighteen.
Actually, I think that's a problem, because you two weren't there. Right, is that the one that you...
Yes.
So I don't think we'll go on that tonight.
Okay. I rescind my motion.
Do we have, what do we have coming up right now? Do you have anything else?
This was a, this, this, this though, Amy, was every, everything was...
Oh, there wasn't a testimony.
There was no testimony, so it was just continuations, right? So I think we can, I think we can do this, because it's just continuations, there was no testimony taken. So we wouldn't be verifying any testimony just to continuation. So, I think we can, I think you can unrescind your motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minute meetings.
You have trouble with this, don't you?
That's a tough one, that's a tongue twister, I haven't had anything...
Isn't that amazing how I could do that for how many years?
I know, the meetings, minute meetings from January third, twenty eighteen. How's that?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have our next hearing at eight fifteen, which is for Fruit Street, so between now and then, why don't we take a look at the Meeting House, twelfth modification, that is before us, as new business.
Just, just a quick question. It says we're approving the minutes for January seventeenth also?
Excuse me, that is, that is not, not going to be doing that tonight.
Okay.
Second?
Um, it is. No. No, we're still on that. Okay, all right. No. No. I sure will.
Joe?
Yeah. He just got into Franklin and asked if we wanted him to come, I said no.
We don't need you, Joe.
Okay, so, so before us is the twelfth modification to the comprehensive permit that was issued, that is being requested for Meeting House Lane.
I don't know if this was distributed, did this go to the whole board? Did you guys get this? It may have just been...
Oh, you don't think? Do you guys have copies? Okay, Bob, there's you, Devin.
This, this, this looks like a...
It says twelfth modification.
Yeah, and with signature lines?
Yes, that's it. Yes.
I don't think you have a hard copy there, I don't think I sent email...
Do you want to make a copy for Devin? Do you want to share your copy with Devin for the moment?
Sure.
And I'm assuming this is an attorney?
Yes. Mr. Chair, Mike Corey for Meeting House Village LLC, the current owner of the last section of the project. This project had been going on since the early two thousands.
I was there.
I wasn't. And John Marini is Meeting House Village, he had purchased the last section, which was twenty units, from the prior owner, Norfolk Town Center LLC, and had, by the tenth modification, he had requested that there be four buildings containing five units each, with five affordable units. He granted that on November thirtieth, twenty fifteen. I have a copy of the tenth modification. I didn't realize there was an eleventh, and I apologize, I wasn't the attorney doing the permitting. I think Paul Schneider's was doing that, and he was not available. I'm handling the condominium, the, the, creating the condominium documents, going to the land court, because it's registered land, and getting this approved. We had, we had gone with the four buildings as approved in the tenth modification. We established last spring the first phase, the first building of five units. We are now presenting to the land court the second phase, and the land court reviewed the documents and found, and asked us for clarification. The tenth modification to the comprehensive permit identifies the buildings as buildings ten, eleven, twelve, eleven, twelve, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. In the plans that we've been submitting...
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Because this is a separate project from, from Norfolk Town Center LLC, John had listed them as buildings one, two, three, and four. I don't think that's any controversy. But, in the, in, also in the, so that was one clarification I thought we ought to make and ask you guys to issue a modification, so that we can record it at the land court. But also, there are supposed to be five affordable units. And I had been working with Ms. Jacobson, and then I spoke to Mr. McCarthy, the town planner, and they both confirmed that the understanding of the town was that the units, an affordable unit, of the five affordable units, one would be placed in the first building, one would be placed in the second building, one would be placed in the third, and then two in the fourth phase, the fourth building. But, the land court, the, the land court judge in his review of the entirety of this record, everything at the, at the registered land desk on this property in Norfolk County, noted that in section three, three of the findings, it said that there would be two units in the second and third building, one unit in the first building, and none in the fourth. So, because we're, we are now moving on with this, and they didn't catch it when we did it originally, I would be, I would have been here in the, in the spring, they asked that I come back and seek some kind of formal acknowledgement that the town is okay with the distribution of affordable units. One in the first building, one in the second, one in the third, and two in the fourth. And that's why I'm here. I don't believe it's a substantial modification under, under the C.M.R. rule. I think that it can be done on an informal basis.
Correct.
And I have, I have the current condominium site plan before the land court, I can bring it up to you if you like.
Sure.
It shows, it shows the building, buildings labeled one and two, the ones that have been built out. Building three has been framed, and they've just started building four. Here is building one, that was approved last fall, and it's labeled building one. Building two is here, this is going to be added per phase and presented to the land court, that should be approved over the next few days, and then three and four will come in here. The, the board can have this if they would like.
Great, great, thank you.
And so I would hope, and I'm not sure that I got the language right, and I, I prepared notes of decision, but I'd need to fill it in with actual facts, what happens here. But if you could consider entering that twelfth modification.
Thank you. Any questions for the attorney from the board?
No, it's really nothing really, just straighten out the land court, you know?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the four buildings previously approved by, for the twenty additional units within the town's approval permits as buildings one, two, three, and four, so as to match the approved development plans approved and placed on record at the Land Registration Office of the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. And secondly, the town approved the distribution of the five affordable units to be established within the four buildings, so that one affordable unit each will be located in the first three of the projects remaining buildings, with two affordable units in the fourth and last building.
Second. Any discussion? I did talk to both the fire chief and to Sue Jacobson, and there is no issues from their standpoint. Sue Jacobson, obviously, is director of our housing, she has no issue with that, and I talked to the fire chief, and he has no issue relabeling the building since it is for land court, and does not affect the unit numbers in the twenty units.
That's good to know.
Can I just ask a weird question?
Sure.
So, it's, these are units, they're numbered, unit fifty, then fifty-two?
Yes. They match the, the addresses. This is an even side of the street.
Oh, okay, okay, got it.
I had questions about that when I started putting together the master deed.
Okay. So we have a motion, and seconded, to grant the minor modifications? Devin? Or actually, Mike, why don't you start, Mike?
Yes, to grant.
Devin?
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, I know it's been a, a lot of back and forth.
It's amazing, it's fourteen years in, in the making.
We appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
So, it'll be signed, would I be able to pick it up at some point?
Yeah, Amy, is this the original that I have? We can probably sign this right now, and you have to make a copy.
There's, there's another one here too, if you want.
I think I have a, I think I have a...
I have a single sheet, I have...
I think I have a copy, do you have it? You have it in the file?
Ten of them, yeah, those are, yeah, the most, uh, single sided.
You can take one and two if you want to, you can take the first page and the second page if you want.
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, that's fine.
What do you got? In the folder? Fruit Street, one forty-four, there's a road, nope, these are all minutes, so...
They're all minutes? Okay, then I didn't.
Do you want, do you want to do like, do you want like page one, page two?
No.
No?
No, I don't think so, thanks, though.
I'm just not sure if the land court will allow me to file an original that's double sided.
Really? Okay, you know what, I can actually print it right from my computer.
Okay.
Keep running into...
What we'll do, did you want this this evening, or were you looking for...
No, 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 that's fine.
Why don't we, we'll do it, Amy will print one off, and tomorrow she'll be ready in her office, we'll all sign.
That's wonderful, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
So, we'll do it, then we'll just tomorrow, he can come by your office. Thank you.
And the other thing, should I complete the notes of decision and submit it?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we sign that now, so we don't have to come up tomorrow?
No, she's going to print it out for us this evening, and we're going to sign it.
All right.
And he just, we'll pick it up tomorrow, otherwise he's not waiting, unless he wants to wait for, you have one? Here we go.
Are you recording this in Dedham or Boston?
Yeah.
I know right where to go. I don't want to be at the top.
I think you have your calling, though, you do very good at these motions, I'm enjoying it, I think it's great. I did it as well. As an assistant, I did a good job. If I'd known this, I would have asked to do this longer. Such a great job. Devin has stepped right up to the plate here.
So fast.
Where did he go? There you go.
So did it?
So did you?
That's it?
Amy?
Do you want to make a copy?
Right. Thank you.
Send it to 9 Fruit before I get back, will you?